conduct three study sessions on the Urban Forestry Management Plan, Affordable Housing Incentives, and the Phase Two Development Code amendments. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Please remember this during your comments. Public comment will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 p.m. today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 p.m. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell Notice, City Website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of our commissioners. Commissioner Westerback?
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Here, thank you.
Commissioner LeVar?
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Robson. In addition, staff in attendance include Deputy Community Development Director Gates and planning staff Cameron Colvin, Ray Sosa, and Jaclyn Sampson. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. At specific breaks in the presentation, I will be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand. I will call on you as I see your hands. This will help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, or second a motion, or participate in debate. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Those speaking will have three minutes. We don't have any attendants. Do we have anyone online?
There's nobody in the virtual room, and we did not receive any written comments prior to 3 o'clock today.
Okay, thank you. If there are not any Zoom commenters, we'll move on to the approval of the April 16th minutes. Is there a motion to approve the April 16th minutes?
I move to accept the minutes as written.
Thank you, motion to approve the moments as written. Is there a second?
I'm Sarah Gustafson here, second, thank you.
Thank you, it's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, the minutes have been approved. We can move on to the study session.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Cameron Colvin, Long Range Planner in the Community Development Department. And I am here tonight to provide you all with an update on the Urban Forest Management Plan. I know it's been a while since we've kind of been before the Planning Commission on this particular project. So I'll kind of run through what's been going on the beginning part of this year. So no actions required tonight. I'll mostly be sharing data, preliminary data from our tree canopy assessment and street tree inventory that was included in the packets. So a couple of project updates. I think last time we touched base in the fall, we were in the process of putting out an RFP to select a consultant. We brought on Planet Geo, who's a national firm specializing in urban forestry to help lead this project. So work in earnest started in January, and part of what has been being done is a lot of the background research and data collection to kind of lay the foundation for the plan itself. So some of the things that we've been working with Planet Geo to do are look at existing plans, codes, and operations across multiple city departments, including community development, public works, and parks and recreation that affect trees. Collecting all of that information, looking at kind of staff capacity and current available funding, and benchmarking that against other jurisdictions of similar size. Planet Geo's also done an internal survey of city staff to get additional input on kind of, to better understand current practices across the multiple departments as well as help identify any potential challenges. And then what we'll be focusing on tonight are kind of the street tree inventory and tree canopy assessment data that they've been working on. So looking at the tentative project schedule, we're about halfway through. Now, as I mentioned, kind of a lot of the work up to this point gives us a good starting point to begin conversations with the public. So a lot of the public engagement will begin this summer. And then we hope to have kind of an initial draft for review soon after we come back from recess around August or September. Okay, so I'm going to run through the street tree inventory real quick. So the purpose of this particular inventory, we were focusing on trees within public right-of-way and primarily prioritizing trees within maintain areas. So landscape strips, planters, or medians throughout town. And really, this inventory is to be viewed as kind of a first phase. So covering all trees within public right-of-way. And then this could potentially be expanded out in the future if funding becomes available to include trees on parks and open space or other city maintained properties. So Planet Geo's field crews inventoried trees throughout Bothell. All of their field crew are certified arborists. All of the tree data was collected and maintained in Tree Platter application, which is a GIS-based application. A lot of the information about the trees that they collected included the tree's location, species, size, condition, any maintenance needs, and then any existing conflicts with nearby infrastructure like sidewalks or utilities. So here's kind of a map just showing progress thus far at the time I put together the packets. Their field crews are actually wrapping up the inventory this week or next. So it'll be 100% complete very shortly. And you'll notice any of kind of the blank areas throughout the city may either reflect areas where there's a lot of private streets, areas that may not have been inventoried yet. So when we look at kind of the species makeup of the trees that were inventoried, about a third are red maples. So that kind of stood out as the most common species, followed by 16% Douglas fir, and then kind of lower amounts from there. Typically, when looking at kind of a healthy, diverse urban forest, the industry standard is usually the 10%, 20%, 30% rule. So this kind of recommends no more than 10% of the tree population be the same species, no more than 20% be the same genus, and no more than 30% of the same tree family. And so I think in your packets, there was a graph on that. We kind of exceeded the threshold for the 10% and 20% rules, but met the 30% family rule. And again, that's because of the high percentage of red maples. When we look at size distribution of trees, there's a pretty high amount of kind of small to medium-sized trees in terms of street trees, far fewer, more mature, larger trees, and then same thing for very small, newer plantings. And here's kind of a chart showing that as well. So the purple lines on the chart there are again kind of showing industry standard recommendations for size diversity. And you'll see in terms of kind of the smallest, youngest trees, we're a little short. A lot of medium-sized trees and not as many large mature trees. When we look at the general condition of existing street trees, a majority were classified as good. And the second highest percentage were fair. So I don't have my notes here on the screen, but typically what that means is an excellent tree would be one that's kind of in ideal, perfect condition, no dead, dying limbs or disease present. Good would be maybe, you know, a few limbs here or there are dying. And then all the way down to, you know, critical condition or fully dead. One of the other things that the field crews noted was kind of maintenance priorities. So in general, looking at these kind of categories, priority one removals are going to be larger, more hazardous trees or dead trees. And you'll see that out of our entire street trees, that made up a very, very small proportion. Only five out of the trees inventoried were identified as that. Most of the others just needed, you know, routine pruning and maintenance, which is a good thing. Any questions on the street tree inventory data? Okay. Next, we'll kind of look at the tree canopy assessment data. So this is looking at percentage of tree canopy cover citywide. So what they pulled from for this data, it's developed based on 2023 NAIP data. And our study area for the tree canopy assessment does include the UGA, so don't let the weird boundary lines up there confuse you. When we look at just city limits, our current tree canopy cover is 44% of the city. And when we break out just the UGA, it's about 35% covered. The other things that they looked at were potential planting spaces. So on this map, there's a couple of different kind of unsuitable categories. So things we were looking at were environmental constraints, unsuitable soils for planting, as well as existing utility lines where you may not want, you know, want tree conflicts. And so the chart to the left kind of shows, okay, in a perfect scenario, how much more of the city could potentially have tree cover if we implemented a planting program? The other maps in your packet kind of break down canopy cover percentages by different areas. So we looked at by census block level. The ones on this map that are in the lighter tan cover are the ones with the lowest percentage of tree canopy cover. We looked at it by sub-area or neighborhood. By zoning district. So the main reason we wanted to look at tree canopy cover by zoning district is because this may have a direct tie to the development regulations once we get to that point. And so we can kind of identify which zoning districts there have been larger tree canopy losses or gains. And so you'll notice that the higher percentages are in our residential conservation districts and parks and open space, which makes sense because these are our least dense zoning districts. And the percentages tend to be lower, particularly in our downtown zoning districts in Canyon Park. And then the hexagon maps are kind of just fun to see in a little more detail where those spots throughout the city are where we have the greatest pockets of tree canopy cover. So the other thing we looked at as part of this study, Planet Geo was the firm that conducted our last tree canopy assessment back in 2015 in partnership with King County Conservation District. So what they did is update that study with some more modern technology and methodology so that we could have a direct comparison between 2015 numbers and today. So when we look at the city as a whole, there was a very small change over the past 10 years. Less than 1% decrease in overall tree canopy cover. And so that does reflect changes, both losses and gains in different areas of town. So similarly, we looked at tree canopy change percentages by, at the census block level. By sub-area, so the ones kind of in the lighter tan cover show sub-areas that had larger tree losses, the ones in green are gains. And then same thing by zoning. When we look at zoning, you'll see that residential medium tended to have the largest changes, which kind of reflects that corridor between downtown and the Safeway where a lot of new residential has taken place. And then same thing for downtown, we've had about a 3% change there. The areas where we've seen the largest increases are our parks and open space. So that makes sense, a lot of tree planting efforts out at the former Wayne Golf Course and other areas. And then I think North Creek Business Park was our second largest. And then this map is showing same thing just at the hexagon scale. And then the last thing I wanted to cover on the tree planting assessment was Planet Geo overlaid existing tree canopy data with demographic indicators to help identify, okay, if we're going to prioritize tree retention and planting, what areas of town would that create the most equitable impacts? So things this looks at is existing tree canopy cover, potential planting space, age, income, education levels, and a few other factors kind of overlaid on top of each other. So this will be a useful resource moving forward as we kind of flesh out what Bothell's urban forest program looks like. Yeah?
Commissioner Westerback here. Just to clarify, higher number means higher prioritization. So the yellow needs trees worse than the blue, dark blue?
I think it's the opposite of that. So the ones in the darker are, came out as the highest priority.
Past Friday, okay.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I had it backwards, so thanks.
Any other questions on that before we kind of move in? We just had kind of a couple of prompting questions to get kind of initial feedback on, to help kind of inform the direction of the plan. So are there any initial takeaways from the preliminary data that, you know, raise any questions, key concerns, or priorities that we might want to focus on as we move forward?
Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. This is so exciting, thank you. One thing I noted is that over the last 10 years, the tree canopy percentage has only decreased by 1% despite the development that has been happening. So that makes me think that our existing policies around what can be built and how to protect our environment are working. Do you have any insights on what's maintained that level?
Yeah, so if I go back here to one of these maps. Yeah, a lot of that is some gains, particularly in our critical areas or natural areas where new growth has occurred, or like I mentioned, potentially plantings on parks and open space. So we had gains in some areas and losses in others. So when you look citywide, that's why there's, they kind of balance each other out. So we get a little bit finer detail when we break it down by kind of zoning district. We can hone in on, okay, what particular zoning regulations are we seeing the largest, you know, decreases in?
If I could just ask a question. Commissioner Robson here. I wanted to ask, so this tally that you're doing is regarding the change in the public right-of-way as opposed to overall? So we potentially could be losing trees overall in Bothell while having, you know, slightly less in the public right-of-way. Am I understanding that correctly?
So the tree canopy assessment, that's citywide. So that is looking at tree cover citywide. The street tree inventory was the on-the-ground work. That's just collecting more detailed data about trees within right-of-way.
Thank you.
I don't have a lot to add. I want to concur with Commissioner Gustafson that my first thought was there's been a lot of development, and yet we've only lost about 1%, which tells me that our program is working pretty well. So that was my takeaway reading earlier too. Because we've all watched a lot of especially single-family home developments go in where they, it's most economical for them to just take out all the trees. And a lot of people have been, you know, upset about that. Obviously, we're making it for another area. So anyway, it's encouraging, I think, overall. Because I'm going to tend to fall on the side of prioritizing people and housing, especially dense housing, over worrying about trees. I love trees as much as anyone. So, but we have enormous amounts of potential for street trees, parks, places like that to put trees. I know personally, I went to the UW Bothell when I graduated in '99. And when I grew up, the, where the crows used to roost overnight, I think, to move it out of Redmond, that was all, I think it was forest originally, but it was cut and it was cattle grazing, dairy, dairy cows grazing there, all my, all my years being a little kid. And then I was part of a program when UW Bothell came along as my undergrad. We actually planted, I helped plant all the trees out there. I didn't, you know, I only did a very small part, I'm not patting myself on the back. But, so there's thousands and thousands of trees there that were planted barely 26, 27 years ago. So we can do that in other places too, it's just an encouraging story. So I'm going to continue to fall on the side of let's prioritize housing, particularly dense housing so we're not squandering land, but that we should keep finding places for trees in the public realm. And street trees are great because everybody loves a street tree on a hot day, and a lot of people benefit from it versus the tree in your backyard, which is awesome. But maybe you only get to enjoy it with your family or friend or two.
Commissioner Lever, I second everything that I've heard. This is wonderful and very exciting. I, I'm just kind of thinking of the information component, like making it accessible. I think all of this is wonderful, and I just keep on thinking of sort of those interactive maps so that I can, you know, I keep on being biased and I just look for my house all the time. Like I'm not really wondering how I'm doing. And I really, really love this type of work and seeing the long-term impact of the planning efforts. And when we make the investment that we may not see right away, it is really wonderful to see the why. And I would love for us to really start thinking of how we make all of this robust information available leveraging technology and making it just part of our maps within the website. And I just, I'm so excited, this is wonderful, thank you.
If I could ask another question. Do we have any kind of information as to the loss of trees by size?
Unfortunately not, because it's primarily, the percentages are primarily based on aerial imagery. Yeah, so we would have to essentially do a more detailed inventory to get that information. Yep. We can, I believe you can parse out a little bit of that by looking at LiDAR data. But, you know, it's only fairly accurate, so.
My concern when it comes to coming up with regulations is that, you know, you cut down a very large tree that's been there for 500 years and you replace it with one that's three inches across. And, I mean, I think that's why we're getting this sort of glut of trees in one age. And if we're replacing a 500-year-old tree, which I'm sure there aren't many, with a new tree, that's a significant loss even though in the data it's going to look like we didn't lose a tree when really we did lose a tree. So I know that that information would be difficult to collect, but if we could somehow be cognizant of that, knowing with all the development that's going up, they might be cutting down 13 trees and planting nine. There's more to that information than is on the surface. So thank you.
Yeah, one of the, one of city councils' priorities that they called out was looking at, you know, potential implementation of a heritage tree program, which would look at, you know, identifying the city's largest, most mature trees to make sure we protect those as we move forward. So kind of many other jurisdictions in the Pacific Northwest have developed kind of canopy goals at different scales, whether that be citywide, by neighborhood, or zoning district. So I kind of just wanted to get y'all's initial feedback on, is that of interest? Is that something you would like us to look into? Maybe come back with some examples of what's been effective in other jurisdictions?
Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, is there anyone else before I jump in? Okay, thank you. Sarah Gustafson here. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Robson's attention to the age of the trees. I do think there can be unintended consequences. If we plant too many young trees, they could end up actually harming the older trees by taking up space, light, nutrition. So I think it's important to really think about unintended consequences and not set an overall tree goal. I don't think that's what we're doing or what you plan. I'm sure you've got some really cool ideas here. And some of them might be involved with more fine-grained goals like the types of trees, goals for types of trees, diameter of trees, or matching trees in places with climate vulnerability. There's so many great goals that we could strive for. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner LeVar?
Commissioner Lever here. So I am, as imperfect as data is, I just love to use it to really make decisions. So since there are areas where you already identified where it is not feasible and/or just because of the zoning codes and/or the type of usage, that's absolutely an area that we may see different canopy. Like I really don't think having a general goal will be something that will be super useful for us. And that is my answer to your question. And I am, it's a yes-to-for scenario. And I am, it's a yes-to-for scenario as well. Since there's so much planning going around, I'm really thinking about what would happen if you were to do it at a zoning, at a zoning level, also area plan, with the housing plan and really looking at what the city can do for us to find that balance. Thank you.
Commissioner Westerback here. I just want to concur with Commissioner Lever and Guffsterson that I'm not necessarily gunning for a quota because you, we all know you can have a lot of something bad. So like Commissioner Guffsterson said, like the quality and the type of trees and kind of trying to get that balance that we're looking for. To me, you know, I'd rather have a little less of something really good than a lot of just mediocre. So I agree with that approach, thanks.
Commissioner Robson here. I would like to point out that it looks like maybe along the trail, they planted, I think, what are poplars that very quickly have just shriveled into death? And so I just wanted to support what, what has been said here before that if we plant to meet our goal arbitrarily, an arbitrary goal or even a carefully considered goal, but don't carefully consider what we're planting and the diversity, I think it can be more of a hurt than a help. So I just wanted to support that and point out that we need, I hope that we're improving some of those considerations than we did in the past before your time, obviously. So I know you and the rest of the team will be more conservative of those goals.
Yeah, and one other thing I'll mention that, you know, we're hoping to get out of this planning process are some more local guidance in terms of right tree, right place, species type, where certain tree types are most effective to provide a little bit more guidance to both, you know, developers and homeowners of, you know, what's most effective. Screen blinked out, there we go. So yeah, we talked a little bit about balancing our housing need, our need for trees. Kind of looking to get y'all's thoughts on that or maybe where we kind of focus efforts.
Commissioner Lever here. So the first thing that comes to mind with this question is adaptation to climate change and the housing needs and the growth of population. So when I think about some of the disasters that we see happening at a local level, national, worldwide, I really think that's a huge component. It's like how do we make sure that we increase our housing stock and preserve the environment while we really plan it for the now, which is a hotter planet? And that is my quest, my answer to your question.
Commissioner Guffsterson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. On the question of balance, I'm wondering if we could learn more about the science of root network preservation. So we're looking at both the top and the bottom of our tree ecosystem. And in the past, we've had some comments from residents who are really concerned about trees on their own properties being hurt by nearby root disruption. I think in February, Mary Farley, if you're listening, I heard your public comment and we're bringing it up now. I'm really concerned about your Douglas firs. And if there's any way we can set guidelines for root zones, limiting materials and roots and storage in root zones, set rules about mulching so that one person will not be harmed by the construction in a different place.
Commissioner Westerback here. I don't have a whole lot of comments except that, in conjunction with my last comment, I'm going to tend to prioritize allowing tree removal for the things we really, really need, like housing. Maybe not for the next big box store. So maybe, maybe we're going to have to start to look at the reason the trees might be coming out. But, and I know that's something else we need to unpack, sort of a qualitative or, you know, different criteria for that. But I feel like we've got places like the former Wayne Golf Course and parks and street tree potential, especially with climate change and hotter days ahead, that I'd rather see us prioritize those trees for everyone in planting programs and aggressively planting so that we know, when we say to someone, yeah, you can develop that to our new RM4 standard and put 20 dwellings, whatever, where they were only in one house before and you're on a bus line, whatever. This is a really good thing for our community. But, oh wait, you can't do it because you've got 20 really big trees. It's sad to see those trees go. And I'm right there with people on that. But I also want to just be thinking about balancing the, you know, it's the railroad problem, right? You got to flip a switch. Do you, do you go that track or that track, which is the less damaging one? Or which is the more beneficial one to society? So anyway, a public tree program to me would be where I'd want to see our emphasis in the next 20 years so that it offsets and maybe even increases the tree canopy relative to the housing that we've worked so hard to put into the code to be built. Thanks.
Commissioner Robson here. I just wanted to agree with what my other commissioners have said. I really, you know, it'd be such a shame that we went through all of this work to increase potential housing options and then have no one be able to build it because they can't cut down the trees. I do, I do really think that we should encourage as much as possible the ability of developers to move their buildings around so that they, and provide incentives for them to do that so they don't take the easier way out. The easiest way to do it is just, you know, bulldoze all the trees. We would want to place some kind of incentive to, well, have them keep the trees. And I think that that would probably be, in my opinion, that would be the best way to do it.
Can I make another comment on that? Because I like that, too. Something I've talked about with other people in my industry, architects, developers, and so forth, is when I was young, 70s, 80s, 90s, they were putting up housing developments everywhere, just like they are now. And it used to be this, I think, the industry changed a lot because it used to be they would try and leave a lot of trees. And I think it was just because it was expensive to take them down and they wouldn't work around them. And maybe it was aesthetic, too, I don't know. It'd be fun to talk to an old timer about that. But you go to, a lot of these older neighborhoods developed 30, 40 years ago, there's trees everywhere. And they're often tracton developments. At 20, 30 years ago, the industry changed and it became a lot less expensive. You guys probably see this in your planning work to just take all the trees out, like you're talking about, Commissioner Robson. And so I've long, long thought, like, I hate when a tree gets in the way of my doing a project. But at the same time, I often feel like, hey, I could work around these trees if I didn't have setbacks causing me trouble. Or I could go a little higher and I could make a smaller footprint. It's almost like the FAR idea, right? If I, if I can only do this much, you know, building envelope, can I just work it around the trees? And so I love the idea of incentives, like, hey, if you leave some of these old trees, like we'll, we'll work with you on, on maybe some variances or something like that. And I know we get in the weeds doing that a little bit. But that's a really good consideration for as we develop a program. So we can say, yeah, we value that. We're actually going to incentivize keeping it. We recognize the value in a three-foot diameter tree or something. And as long as you can make your, your project work, you know, we'll make it worth your while, whatever that may be. So, thanks.
Okay, kind of final question is just related to the street tree inventory for trees within Right Away. So one of the other priorities kind of called out in city council's vision is planting new street trees where we lack them. So if y'all have any thoughts on, I know you mentioned making the data available. We have had a couple of like homeowner associations reach out of interest in utilizing this data as well. So that's kind of on our radar. But if y'all have any other suggestions for how you would like to see the street tree inventory data utilized for future plantings?
Commissioner Lever?
Thank you, Commissioner Lever here. So definitely, I am kind of thinking of the human-centered design approach and thinking that this is a way in which we're giving a voice to the trees. So just like we think, like we're inviting you in and we're telling, we're hearing what you need and in the universal design world where we have to cohabit it and there's just needs. So I'd love to really be able to amplify the voice of the trees in anything, in everything that we do. So I kind of go back again with the leverage and the technology because there's just so many data that the city is collecting and it is wonderful. And I definitely want to make sure that we really use it to drive our decisions, as imperfect as they may be. So I really can stress that enough, that this is just one way in which we can incorporate the voices that we just don't get to hear. So I definitely want to have the trees talking to us throughout our planning processes. Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
I do, Commissioner Westerback here. I had a thought about this and it could be just an experiment, I don't know. I'm thinking about like, we worked really hard on the bike plan and we have multimodal routes we're beginning to develop as a city where we want to be directing people on bikes, scooters, walking, et cetera. I wonder if over time we overlay, like, are we, are we prioritizing street trees and shade for the hot days? So you, you can jump on your bike and you have, you know, in 30 years, you'll have this largely shaded trip on a 90-degree day. And also, it just means that's going to have higher traffic. So I'm just trying to think about where we might find some synergies with, where most people will get benefit from the trees. We know they will in parks, for example, and on like bound downtown streets and stuff. But starting to think about, hey, can we do this, you know, fully east-west or north-south route or something like that to the, start to stitch it together with trees?
Okay, if there's no other questions, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have affordable housing incentive, affordable housing incentive study session? Is that right?
And while Ray and Jaclyn head up to the, to the table, yeah, I just wanted to say, while we've previously been discussing the Housing Action Plan, including the scope, goals, engagement, tonight we're, we're starting a sort of a sidecar conversation around affordable housing incentives and ways in which we can consider how to respond to the, the direction from city council last year in March through the, through their resolution. Just how we can accommodate for those affordable housing income bands as part of the comp plan work. So Jaclyn and Ray are going to run through where we're at and see where this takes us. Ray, you'll want to turn your microphone on.
Apologies about that. That's true. So as I said, I'm Ray Sosa, Senior Long Range Planner. Tonight I'm joined by my colleague Jaclyn Sampson, Long Range Planner. And today we'll be talking about the, some of the incentives that we've been brainstorming for the affordable housing. And so, next slide. And so for, so tonight, as I mentioned, you know, we're seeking initial input and feedback on some of the draft housing affordability incentive concepts that respond to city council's March directive to develop these potential future zoning code amendments that incorporate mechanisms to produce dedicated affordable housing. Big words to say that we are trying to come up with some of these incentives to ensure that the market builds the affordable housing that we need. No actions required tonight. And so as I go through this presentation, I want, I would like for the commissioners to consider the following questions as we go through the presentation. They're also in your package, so I won't read them aloud. But as we go through the presentation, please consider those questions. I'll revisit them at the end of the presentation. So just to give a little background, so in May of 2018, that was about, that was, in fact, during Mass, that was seven years ago. So seven years ago, we adopted the last housing strategy plan, which came out of the 2015 comp plan. So that process took three years. Our goal is to take two years this time. So we're well ahead of time of that. A few years later, the legislature passed HB 1220. Two years later from now, we passed HB 1110. All these, all these legislation that have been passed have done to make sure that we reduce the barriers to affordable housing and that we increase, that we allow middle housing in all residential areas. City council responded with that by adopting ordinance 2407, which made the middle housing code legal here in Bothell. And then also adopting resolution 1473, which asked us to explore some of the incentives for affordable housing and for housing in general. Last year, December, we adopted a comp plan and codified those changes that we, that council had proposed in 2023 as part of the legislation as well. And then in early, early this month, we met with city council to provide an update on the Housing Action Plan. And so a little more background, so in our last count in 2020, we saw that 27% of all households in Bothell were cost burdened, nearly 5,000 in total. Of those, of those households that are burdened, renter households are significantly more likely to be cost burdened. 41% versus 19%. On the chart to the right, these are housing targets for the next 24 years, a set aside by PSRC. As you can see, the dark blue circles, dark blue pie, slice in the pie are housing that we have to build. Majority of that falls under 80% AMI with almost half of the required affordable housing to be at the 0% to 30% AMI. Are, as we're building, as we are seeing development of single-family homes and townhomes and even ADUs, we know that that alone will not help us reach our target of, meaning the house, of homes set aside for, for people and individuals making under 80% or 80 or under 80% AMI. And so to get some more background on this, so the RCW and WCA, the, give us the legal basis to set, to create an affordable housing program in the city of Bothell as long as we follow a percentage of units or the floor area in a development. Provided the program does that, and, you know, I won't read the whole text there, but, you know, but this program allows us to do that through doing some changes, such as zoning changes, bonus densities, height and bulk increases, and parking restrictions for the time being as well. And so current existing affordability, such as Bothell does have some right now. So on the chart, on the map to the right, the dark yellow is the downtown Tahoe, downtown transition district, also known as the Tahoe. The purple with striping is our SR522 corridor. And the light blue with white, with white striping is our general downtown corridor. These are the three downtown zoning overlays that allow affordable housing. And then not shown on the map is Canyon Park that also has some affordable housing overlays on it as well. In addition to this, we also have our voluntary MFT program. As of now, only one project has taken advantage of these current affordable housing overlays, which is a SAMA project on the 522 corridor. And we have not had any developers take advantage of our MFT program as of now. But we are working with our consultants at Arch to study that program and understand better how we can advertise and expand it and make it attractive to developers. And so here now, we're talking about some of the potential affordable. And so here now, we're talking about some of the potential affordable incentives that we, staff is looking at. We have some, we had several football conversations with internally, within our team, within Public Works and within our colleagues at Arch and the Affordable Housing Alliance of the Homage County, so the Arch equivalent of the Homage County. And so these are just some of the initial incentives that we're looking at to incentivize that affordable housing and make it attractive to developers, you know, first ones being density flexibility, so allowing either more or less density on particular zone. We hear that a lot from developers, you know, wanting to have, you know, be able to build more if they want to or actually build less in exchange for affordable housing. Also looking at height increases, making sure, increasing the maximum height or stories, reduce parking, permanent impact fees, permit expediting, and as I mentioned, the MFT as well. With the reduced parking, we're also following state laws and seeing where that will land us. And also making sure that we are working on that in the Phase 2 code work. And so next step, so the input received tonight will are from our ongoing work in developing and refining the affordable incentives. So the list I showed is just a preliminary first list. And then we hope to take these key takeaways and concerns to City Council to get their feedback as well as we decide how to best structure and implement these incentives. Mentioned that, you know, these incentives will not, will be part of a menu developers will be able to choose. And so we're hoping that, you know, we're in alignment with other of our peer cities and that we provide an effective enough incentive to incentivize affordable housing that we need to build for the next 20 years. And so as I mentioned, no action is required tonight. You and I were just looking to get your feedback on the incentives list that I provided. And as I mentioned in the next slide, the questions we'd love for our commission to consider tonight.
Any thoughts? Commissioner Westerbeck?
I want to know if other people want to go first because I got several points to make. Okay, this is literally one of the reasons I got in Planning Commission. I actually built and fill and design it. And so I think about this a lot. One thing I'm glad to see we're going to tackle parking because some of the biggest bugaboo's for small lot development, which is what we've been pushing for in city of Bothell more than big, although we're getting big anyway because that's just going to come anyway. One is actually building code related. Two years ago about this, state of Washington did the single stair bill that they're working on. It's due by July 1st, 2026, and then cities can opt into it or not. So I'm going to be doing a full court press to get our building inspector or building commissioner, we go to building, what do you call it, building official? And council whoever ways in to do that because our code, our building code requires two stairs for anything over three stories. City of Seattle's had six stories for 50 something years and they actually have really good fire, you know, rates of safety and things like that, as does the rest of the world. So this single stair thing is not new to a lot of people, but it actually ties in directly to land use because on a small site, two stairs eats up a ton of room, costs a lot of money. This is just setting aside the elevator thing, which is a whole nother battle going on and I could bring that up tonight because it's harder. But cities, and we can do this sooner, we can do it tomorrow if we want to go to a single stair over three stories. Because right now the building code only allows three stories. That's one thing that's going to really open up small lots. Makes it less expensive, easier to develop. Ideally, we get an elevator too, but you can put accessible units at the ground floor and take care of that. So that's really important. That's a building code, not planning issue, but we need to be talking to our building official about that. And then parking is a huge elephant in the room. Not every project's going to not build parking because you're just going to need it some places. But having the option to build it or not, especially in the greater downtown area, is a huge needle mover on cost. One that we don't talk about much and it's really Public Works related is we require a lot of frontage improvements. I know we did some really good work last year with Public Works to reduce frontage improvements, infrastructure requirements and make them proportional for ADUs and additions and things like that, which is really good. It's going to, going to, going to supercharge or at least help us do ADUs and DDU's and things like that. We might eventually need to do some reform around multifamily and other kind of projects or middle housing too because I've worked on a couple infill projects now where the cost to put in frontages, regrinding the road, sidewalks, curbs, all wonderful stuff. We all love it. Lights from Peaches Sound Energy, benches, relining of sewers, water lines, all that stuff. The public realm used to be built by the city and municipalities in the old days. It's been shifted over partly because we got over our ski tips and we built, you know, I don't know if the people know the statistic. Bothell has enough roads to stretch from here to Spokane. No wonder we can't pay for anything. Urban 3 found that in their study for us a few years ago. So we're scrambling to keep all this stuff maintained. And so we can't, we can't build public infrastructure anymore hardly, we can't keep up with it. So it gets, falls on the developer and that increases the cost of housing significantly. 50 to 100,000 maybe per unit for like a four townhouse project like I'm working on. So it's no small amount. It makes rents go higher and everything. So that's not something we're necessarily going to solve in planning, but we should be cognizant of all that has a huge cost to the cost of housing. It's one of the things driving the cost of housing. So for example, we had to reline 120 or so feet of perfectly good sewer in the alley. And it still sticks in my craw because we got a video of it, like you have to do. And the city, it's in the code, you've got to reline it if they ask you to. And it's perfect. There were no cracks, there were no trees. It was older, which is why we had to reline it. But there was nothing wrong with it. According to experts, our utility contractor and others, their engineers say, no, you gotta do it anyway. Well, it was $60,000 from three different vendors. Fortunately, the city was doing work around the city, doing that very thing at the city, at the city cost. So they were doing it, you know, our taxes were paying for it. So we got a great deal of it for $25,000. Anyway, project costs. So let's not wonder why cost of housing has gone up. All these costs we layer on to small projects. Now, this is not a big, as big a deal for a big developer. They've got tight budgets too, but they, they're borrowing large amounts of money, they can go get it. The small developers just not equipped to handle these huge, these huge costs. And their profit margins go down and they just don't build. So we could probably go a little more lightweight on some of those, those public requirements and still get enough to make the project work for the community and keep it safe and useful. The impact fees are also, I know we need them. We fund the city with a lot of impact fees and stuff. Our traffic impact fee is really high. That's probably the most egregious one. The parks, the fire, the schools, they all seem pretty reasonable. But the traffic impact fees, significant. Again, just drives up the cost of things. So maybe, you know, some projects should pay and for things we really want to incentivize, we do need to look at that. So I'm glad that's on the list. Permit expediting, yeah, especially if you've already paid for the land and you're paying huge amounts of interest or paying a mortgage or whatever. Or even if you just got the land tied up or you don't own it yet, but you're on some sort of contract to get it later. There's a cost to months and months and months and months in permit. And small projects should really be easy to permit. They shouldn't be the two-year timeline like a, like a six-story apartment building. And so I really hope we can get a handle on that. And I want to say Bothell's actually pretty good about permitting. Better than many jurisdictions, so I don't want to throw us under the bus, but we can always do better. We also have a lot of design standards that are probably unnecessary, especially in our downtown code, but elsewhere as well. And we're going to be tackling those when we get into our downtown subarea zone, sorry, subarea zoning code. And so, you know, a lot of stuff's just in there that's unnecessary. I won't get into too much detail. And that just drives up cost. And one, the last one I want to talk about right now is small developers, often just, you know, small companies, they're, maybe they were just doing single-family houses and stuff before. They're starting to move into townhouses or small apartment buildings, whatever, you know, someone like myself. MFT and stuff like that, they would love to do that, but it just sounds like a huge headache. And it takes a long time, it takes paperwork and maybe lawyers and negotiations. And again, time is money. Well, they're just, they're like ordering, you know, siding one day and then they're like, oh, I gotta do all this paperwork to try and get a, you know, and they just want to house people at a good price. So if we can look at how to make it easier or the city can, can come alongside people and tell them these incentives are easy, can we make it easy for you? We really want to see you build this project and make it less expensive or more attractive to build. Because the bigger developers, they just throw a team at it, big deal. They know how to do all that stuff, the grants and whether they, they're trying to get money for an affordable housing project or MFT, whatever. Because MFT is a great idea. But we just look at it and, I mean, even someone like myself who looks at it and goes, I could do this. I understand how to fill this out. It's time, it's money, it's effort. It just becomes not worth it. So it looks really good to us as people making policy and planning and staff and everything. But we just have to see it through the lens of people trying to do this and just go, ah, this is just another, it's just more friction. It's just another roadblock. And I, can I just get on with this? And so it feels like a tax, even though it's not necessarily, you're going to actually get, they're going to get a benefit from it. To them, it's just, they're just seeing it as a burden. So they won't even do it. So we have to make it really easy to take advantage of our incentives. So I just wanted to say that. And I don't know, this is, you know, we all are familiar with the idea of a public-private partnership. And that's part of one of the reasons I understand that we started pushing more and more of the cost of development and public infrastructure onto developers, as it went from public-private to just private. But we may want to start looking at, okay, gosh, you've got to do $300,000 of infrastructure and frontage work. It's going to bust your project. So I don't know, it's like you do a tax increment financing or you do some sort of public-private partnership or some way that the city could work with the developer if they want that project to happen to, you know, like when King County does the capacity charge and you can pay it over 10 years or whatever. Look at things like that, that spread it out over time or it becomes a loan product or it's built into something instead of saying, yep, $300,000, just take it or leave it, you know? It's not going to work. People are just going to walk away and say, no, no thanks. I'm working with someone right now on a feasibility study for a project here in Bothell. And what they wanted more than anything was to find out how much it was going to cost to dig in the street and connect the water and the sewer and where the, where the PSE, you know, transformer was and all that kind of stuff. That was going to make or break whether he can do the project. So I think those are the things people don't talk about much, but that's like the first thing we talk about on a project is all that boring stuff that goes in the ground and what that's going to do. It's fun to talk about the, the cool building we want to build, but that's almost the easy part. I might come up with some more comments, but you just, you just need to know about that. There's all these sort of hidden fees or bits of friction or roadblocks being small that big just bulldozes over. So our regulation is generally not set up for the small developer. And I think we're going to have to start shifting to make it easier because that's kind of projects we're coding for now. We've always coded for the big, I think most of our development regulations, especially in the downtown and the denser areas are made for the five-story, 200-unit projects. We need to start thinking about what, what do we do to get the 10-unit project? And there aren't many financial products for them either. It's really hard for, for, there's a lot for single-family, for townhouses. And then weirdly, you'd make this jump over mixed use and small apartment buildings straight up to 200-unit. It's almost easier to get a 200-unit apartment funded than it is to get a 10-unit loan, to construction loan. It sounds weird, but it's true. So we should just be aware of that as we're, as we're making policy. So very long-winded. Thanks for being patient with me. These are just some of the issues I see.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioner? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Following on what Commissioner Westerbeck said, it sounded like the downtown corridor incentives didn't generate the units, but I would love to hear from our senior planners and Commissioner Westerbeck. Are there any other Bothell areas where the incentives worked, where they did create affordable units? And if so, what were the incentives and are there any narratives or case studies so we can understand that example?
As far as existing affordable housing, deed restricted affordable housing projects, there have been very few that, that exist. There are a handful around the city that have been around for, for years. There are several King County projects from years past. And, and part of it is, part of what we need to look to do is right-size what those incentives are. If they, if it's additional height, is it one story, is it two, what is that, that, that measure? When we see that just over 4% of the city has a required affordable housing development standard, how do we achieve 75% of the units that we have to build in the next 20 years? So sort of the, where does it extend to? And what are the, what are the, the levers and the tools that we can, we can throw at it? And if, if it is, you know, what's on this list, if there's other, you know, and we'll be, we'll be looking to, to expand upon those potential other incentives, just to make sure we are making a project whole. So if, if the incorporation of a required affordable unit did not have enough incentive, what else do we need to add to it? And we have to, we have to dive into that. And that's, that involves reaching out to the development community, making sure that we can see what that, what that equates to.
Thank you. If I may, might make one clarification, or sorry?
No, I was going to mention that the SAMA, the reasons why it was allowed, and one of the reasons why it would happen was because they received a competitive grant from Amazon. The developer received that grant and so that's probably where to get the financing needed to create that development. We can rely on Amazon to fund all of our affordable housing, so that is one of the, that is the background for how SAMA came to be.
Okay, so it sounds like SAMA had a grant, which was amazing. Were there any city-provided incentives that it was able to employ to build?
Only the zoning in that case. The zoning there was favorable to allowing those all affordable units.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the incentive that was used?
Not the incentive, but the zoning there allowed for the 100% affordable units.
Okay.
With that level of density that they required to make it pencil out.
So the zoning was extremely helpful there, which is good. I think I'm asking because it sounds like there must have been some successes somewhere where the incentives did work and I'm hoping that we could learn from those. Perhaps they were in Kirkland because sometimes the best way to figure out what will work is to look at what has worked. And I'm so happy we have SAMA and thank you for bringing up that really good example.
To your point, I don't want to interrupt. I think Redmond, and maybe Bellevue too, but I don't know, Redmond has had a lot of success with MFT. And I might have actually learned that from planners here in Bothell during one of our, our Planning Commission meetings. But and to that point, another version of FTE is the, and you guys may have heard this now. And I think it's now included in our new TOD bill that the governor is about to sign. The funded inclusionary zoning idea. A lot of developers want to do inclusionaries, you know, inclusionary zoning, less expensive units. Like, you know, they're motivated to do something good, but they can't make the project pencil out. Which is why the bill didn't pass last year because there was argument about how much inclusionary zoning is basically saying, we're going to reduce your profits on a project. It's almost penalizing the developer because we as a society didn't build enough housing for 40 years. It's like, oh, it's, it's on, it's on you to build all this extra now, you have to take a hit. Anyway, SiteLine wrote about this, the funded inclusionary zoning, it's really just MFT by another name. It's saying, society is going to pick up the tax to pay for, to defray the costs of the 10 or 20% of reduced rent or lower purchase price homes. And essentially as a, as a low tax, it tends to be a low, low amount from what I've read. Tax, much like MFT really is how they often do it. So that might be a real boon for us, looking at this TOD bill. And maybe we'll find some streamlined ways to use that funded inclusionary zoning. And I think it's going to be really, I don't even know if I want to say popular, but I think it could, might maybe start to bust open the inclusionary zoning faucet, as it were, pipeline by finding a way for these developers to do inclusionary zoning without necessarily losing profit so much that they don't want to do the project. So as a city, we should look into that. I think Shoreline's doing it now and I think one other city, maybe it's Seattle, I'm not sure. But there are cities starting to dabble in that funded inclusionary zoning idea. But there are cities starting to dabble in that that funded inclusionary zoning idea. Thanks.
Just to give a little context, so the M F T program is relatively new. It's only been four years since we've implemented. The east side cities like Redmond and Kirkland have had their programs since the late 90s. So they've had like, have several decades of head start on us. And so just to give some comparison as to why our program hasn't had an uptick, it's just been relatively new compared to the other peer cities.
I feel like as we go forward with like honing our program for enticing infill middle housing developers, we might start to develop almost marketing materials like, hey, be sure to look at, like you said earlier, our menu of options. Hey, we got these 10 or 12 ideas, whatever they are, and and here's one, you know, and we want to make it easy for you. So we'll we'll walk you through it or we'll at least help you get started, whatever. And here's, you know, we want to, we want to see you build here. And maybe come at it with an attitude like that and really organized because people come in, especially if they're first-time builders. And they get overwhelmed and they're just like, oh, I'm just going to sell my property. This is way too hard. We don't want that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lever here. So the comments that I'm going to make are in relation to the developers with a point of view from my government experience and my experience with housing and thinking of the who we're building for. So one of the items in your presentation that really caught my eye was your demographic chart where you had the house burden. And when I look at the demographics of Redmond, which, I mean, Redmond, Bothell, over 60% being white and then homeowners. I really like wonder who are those renters because when I think about really supporting affordable housing, there is a stigma associated with affordable housing that it is for black and brown, and we don't want renters here. I am very concerned about not really thinking of our audience because even if we do bring the incentives, even if we do bring everything to the table. I mean, I've seen multiple times when the community says, not in my backyard, and it just doesn't happen. And I really think that we cannot kind of forget that we're in a very polarized time where is really the ordering of the renter versus the homeowner. And we're planning for the future with the residents of today. And when we look at the age of our residents, the demographics of our residents, and the zero sums that we have, I know that this is a very complex challenge. And when I think about who is a developer and I think about the role that the government has or has had in this space where the government was the developer and that shifted to private when they moved from from public housing to the Housing Choice voucher program. And then really steering all those dollars to private owners. And then you were not really building that for all the reasons that we just heard. I am really concerned with the lack of collaboration that we see. And coordination is expensive. It takes time. So when I look at the incentives, I really don't see an incentive for actually taking the time to build those relationships to really bring the entities that are going to provide those dollars or lack thereof because we're seeing them drying up. But I am concerned about with the story that we're telling, like, who are we building this for? So in the graph that you had, I would love to really see who are the renters, what's the demographic information? And I know it's really difficult to get that data because you don't really respond or you don't, sometimes you can disaggregate it like that. But we can have some ideas of really making sure that when we're presenting a project, when we're really talking about who we're building it for, we can really ease the fear that I do sense in my lovely home about we're building for someone who's not even me. And I don't want them here. And then when we start seeing the changes that in the demographics and we see more black and brown coming to this space who might actually be occupying these rental units, we are going to potentially see even more rejection to this type of projects and just the whole affordability just gives people the ick. And that's something that I really wish that we could look at things more as like one big item rather than, and I know it's not possible, but I just have to say it, like, we just kind of compartmentalize it as if the developers are not really part of the residents and the nimbeism that we experience, and it's just all interconnected. And even when it comes to the parking, I know I work downtown Seattle. It will take me two and a half hours to get home. So I am a homeowner. I don't have to worry about parking. However, if we're really trying to bring that affordability, we need to be working with sound transit. We need to be really advocating for bringing it all together. And I know it doesn't happen, but it doesn't really work in a vacuum. So these incentives, I just really think of who's going to be looking at, which is my fellow residents. And they don't seem to be for the residents. And the one thing that I have heard multiple times is this aversion towards renters. And I really want to make sure that we can really leverage the data and really paint the story that this is truly for all of us and what it means to have affordable housing being such an expensive, we're living in a very expensive area. And I don't see that all the time. So in terms of the utility component, I mean, this is something that's not just happening in Bothell. So that's where the whole regional approach makes sense. But we that we don't live in a place where we're thinking regional is just like, let me just worry about my block. And I can change that, but I do have to address it. As you may know, the executive of King County just appointed Commissioner Braddock, who released her 200-day plan, which includes a utility summit because it is an issue that we have at region, at a regional level. And I also think about all the dollars that are being potentially committed to affordable housing. Like, I think it's $1 billion in the D C H S with King County. And again, like, what are the incentives to keep developers informed and or really make that investment or having someone who's really stays? Just like you're going to have someone who's going to help you with digging the dirt, that someone can really follow up on all the things that you need to know to really submit the paperwork. My other comment around the incentives is the whole waiving of the fees all the time. I really think about is profit all the time. And when we stop asking for money, someone's got to lose. And I really, I really want to be mindful of the needs of the developers and also really understanding like what is the gap that we're trying to close here, which we're not going to do it alone. But this is where really looking at all the things that impact the lack of affordability in the developing world and the lack of government intervention in providing that affordability or closing that gap makes it a much more difficult so challenge. It's not like a technical solution. So I do know that no matter what we come up with, which I know is going to be wonderful because of all the work, it's not going to resolve it because this is an adaptive challenge. And I really want to make sure that we bring the data forward and we really think about who are we talking to when we present these items? And and making sure that we can paint the story for today and for the future in a way that our residents can start embracing this concept of affordability. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further comments, I think that's, is there anything else you guys need from us this evening?
Just one question. So one last question I have, you know, I've heard a lot of, you know, what developers can do, how complex it can be for developers to develop. And so I do want us to think just one more time, you know, what other list that we can go to the last slide. Other list that we have, you know, is this something, is this a good place to be starting? Is there any incentives that we haven't thought of that we should consider moving forward as well? This would be the time to really get that feedback before we go to city council and I would just like to, you know, hear that perspective one more time.
Well, in terms of the idea, like, if a developer comes in with a thorough demographic analysis and everything that will give you some sort of, then you have to waive something, if you really know who you're building for and what it means to be working with the city of Bothell at a really, in a really robust way. I would love to see that, where they really like take the time to understand some of the challenges and put a, like, help us put the stories together.
Commissioner Westerbeck, I would just say add, add, if it's not already part of the M F T E, make sure you're looking at the funded inclusionary zoning since it's kind of this idea that's really coming on strong. And then I'm not sure the the shape of this yet, but as I mentioned, I think talking to Public Works more, starting to look at. We still need to build those those improvements, but the proportionality aspect. There's even been some, some, there was a Sheets, a guy named Sheets in California went all the way to the Supreme Court because he didn't feel the the requirements he had to to for for public improvements were proportional, were warranted. And so I just think we need to be talking to Public Works about, can we, where can we negotiate and make sure we're being proportional when we ask for improvements? Because there's, last thing I'll say about this is there's a huge disconnect between like what Public Works wants from a project and its actual cost. They never have to think about what anything costs. And so things, you know, like, oh, you got to do this thing and it'll be halfway through the project and it costs $100,000. This this does happen all the time. Like, well, we didn't plan for that at all. And, you know, like throwing this bomb in the middle of our project. Oh, well, you know, we want it. And they just make little tweaks along the way. And so we really need to have some some control of that. And and staff needs to understand there's repercussions when they ask for these really big, grand, wonderful things that we all want, but we necessarily can't always pay for because it affects who gets to live there and how much it costs to live there. Thanks.
Commissioner Lever here. I have a question. So I was just looking at my email and there were some bills that the governor signed around affordable housing. So some of the housing bills that were passed, some of them, I don't see them as potential incentives for, for instance, creating additional insurance options for condominiums. I mean, I'm not going to read through all of them, but it looks like there were a number of bills that were meant to, that were signed today. So I'm a little late to the party.
There's some good ones.
Yeah, so there are really good ones here. So I think the answer to the question is like really looking at the bills that were signed and then see if there's anything that we can just make sure that we mirror. That would be a a great way to 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 increase your your incentives. So, yeah.
On the on the bills, once the dust settles and we we have a good assessment of what has been signed, the the full list, we will be coming back just to to provide a heads up of of what took place. But it does influence the work of the Housing Action Plan, Climate Action Plan, Downtown Work, as well as other codes. So we're, we've been following it really closely and we, we want to make sure that we're, we're including what has to be included and then pivoting as as needed, as as we as we learn.
And I know you have it. I'll just send you what I have because sometimes if I'm getting fake news, I want to know that too. Okay?
Okay, well, thank you so much for your presentation. If that's all from you need from us. Thank you for coming and for your wonderful presentation today. You've given us a lot to think about. And the final study session for today is the Phase Two developmental code amendments from.
Jaclyn Stace for round two.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Jaclyn Sampson. I am a long-range planner here. And we're going to talk about the Phase Two code amendments. So no action required today. We're just seeking feedback from the Planning Commission on the different draft code materials for the following code amendment topics. That includes neighborhood-scale commercial, parking, as well as administrative amendments. So this is our agenda for today. We're going to go over some quick updates on Phase Two and then go into those topics. So neighborhood-scale commercial, parking, as well as maximum building coverage and those administrative amendments. All right, so staff took the Planning Commission approved recommendations to City Council on April 8, 2025. And City Council provided some comments on the Phase Two topics, which I'll highlight specifically in later within the presentation. But they also approved the recommendation to remove floor area ratio, ratio or F A R law coverage as well as overlay to zones from the Phase Two code amendments and onto a later work plan. These are going to be the discussion questions for today. Those are also going to be in your packet. And I will also have the slide at the very end of the presentation so we can refer back to them then. All right. So first, we're going to talk about neighborhood-scale commercial. So we are proposing neighborhood-scale commercial options because the 2024 Comprehensive Plan supports small-scale commercial throughout the city. And to guide this, we're using the Department of Commerce recommendations. At the April 8 meeting for City Council, they supported staff and planning commissions' recommendations to go ahead and follow commerce guidelines. So these changes can be seen in the definitions chapter in 110206, as well as in the permitted use chapter in 1206. And those changes are also within your packet. So we originally recommended that 30% of the net billable area for scaling because it ties the commercial size directly to the size of the lot. When I say net billable area, we're looking at the total billable area on the lot, not just the size of the building. But this approach scales naturally, making sure larger lots can support slightly larger commercial spaces while small lots don't get overbuilt. However, City Council did point out that on very small lots, 30% can end up being way too small to support a functional commercial space. So that's why we have added the greater of 1,800 square feet or 30% language to ensure even small lots can have a functioning commercial space. On the other end, we didn't, we also didn't want really large parcels to result in oversized neighborhood commercial spaces that feel out of scale from the neighborhood. So that's why we also set a cap. So no matter how big the lot, the commercial space can't exceed 2,500 square feet. This aligns with Department of Commerce's guidelines on the average size of a small neighborhood grocery store and keeps the use at a truly neighborhood scale. So now the scale reads maximum square footage for a neighborhood-scale commercial space is limited to the greater of 1,800 square feet or 30% of the net billable area of the lot, not to exceed 2,500 square feet. And then we also looked at the average parcel area for different zones where neighborhood-scale commercial can be developed. Removing those parcels that are larger than one acre because that just kind of skews the data. So when we looked at the average parcel sizes across the zones excluding large parcels over an acre, we have found that in most cases, 30% of the lot naturally comes to or more than 2,500 square feet. So in practice, most neighborhood-scale commercial spaces will get maxed out at 2,500 square feet. So this shows that the scaling system is flexible on those smaller lots. But again, it does, it ensures that larger lots don't get too intense and keeps the uses compatible to the size of the neighborhood. Right, parking. So since 2022, the city has been discussing potential changes to parking requirements. So with growing interest in reducing minimums in 2023 and 2024. Right now, the Senate Bill 5184 is, well, it moved through 2025 State Legislative Session and the proposed bill has been signed by the governor this morning at 1:00 P. M. So the Senate Bill as of March 21st is on the screen right now. And information on the bill that was signed by the governor hasn't been released yet. But staff will stay updated to see if there have been any changes in comparison to what you see on the screen. City Council has expressed sustained interest since 2023 in eliminating off-street parking minimums citywide and wanting to explore what this would look like for the code. So staff have prepared in your packets the proposed code updates. If we were to, one, remove off-street parking minimums, minimums, as well as address ripple effects that on related requirements. So that includes bicycle parking and ride-share parking. With this updated code, we hope to get Planning Commission's feedback on if cities should move forward with updating the code in response to Senate Bill 5184 or go beyond, or go beyond the bill and remove off-street parking minimums entirely. So currently, bicycle and ride-share parking are tied to off-street parking minimums. So staff have drafted a revised code using examples from peer cities. So bike parking and ride-share are calculated independently from off-street parking minimums. So for bike parking, we used Bellingham's Code as an example because they already have off-street parking minimums removed. So they, basically, it illustrates how bike parking should be calculated as well as how those parking facilities should be designed. And then for ride-share parking, we opted to use the current code, which is one spot for every 20 required parking spots. And for a commercial that, or sorry, for a business that has employees working six hours or more. So instead of using, saying the required, the 20 required spots, we'll just say that for every site that proposes off-street parking in general in their project, that they are required to have one ride-share space per every 20 proposed spaces. required to have one rideshare space per every 20 proposed spaces. So, parking management has also been on the radar for the city. And currently, multiple departments are working on finding solutions to create improvements, to ensure that cars are not parked illegally. So, the Community Development is working on expanding the mandatory affordable housing program beyond downtown and Kenyon Park. Parking reductions can serve as an incentive for the development, like we talked about earlier today, for the development of affordable housing. But, if we eliminate all parking minimums, or off-street parking minimums, then we lose this as an incentive tool. So, it's also important to keep in mind that Senate Bill 5184, which has been signed by the governor, removes parking for affordable housing, but this won't take in effect for the next three years. So, we save a lot of time. Tonight, we hope to get some guidance from Planning Commission on if we should keep off-street parking minimums. That way, the city can still use parking reductions as an incentive for affordable housing, or to remove off-street parking requirements entirely. Maximum building coverage. As of January 1st, we updated development regulations to increase maximum building coverage, as well as hard surface coverage, to meet new zoning and land use goals. So, since these standards are still new, no further adjustments are currently needed. But, City Council supported Planning Commission's recommendation to eliminate maximum building coverage, and rely only on maximum hard surface coverage. So, this simplifies the code, gives projects more flexibility, and makes reviews easier. No changes are proposed to the current hard surface limits in 121403. And then, those sections on the screen just highlight where maximum building coverage was mentioned. And most of these sections, it purely is just mentioned in the code, maybe in one sentence. So, those sentences were crossed out from the code. And then, next, we'll talk about administrative amendments.
And that's me. So, we drafted some updates to the variance criteria, which is a Type III Hearing Examiner decision. That does not change. We don't receive too many of these, but we felt that there was some room for updating it. The main updates eliminate the shoreline references within that code. The, a shoreline variance follows Title 13 under the SMP, and the same criteria exists in there, plus, you have to meet the, the Washington Administrative Code shoreline variance standards as well. So, it was duplicative, and it was just creating, you know, unnecessary confusion. So, we cleared that up a little bit. And we updated some of the, the application contents criteria as well, and, and the criteria as well, just to make sure that we're a little more, a little more streamlined, just to, to help out. And then, for docketing, just a couple minor changes, site-specific rezones, primarily, what we wanted to do is create a, a process that establishes a recommendation by the Hearing Examiner that would go to City Council. So, making very clear, if it's a, if it's a comprehensive plan update, if it's a zoning, citywide zoning, or if it's a site-specific rezone, how, how do we process these, and what are the criteria for each one? Throwing in some different criteria to make sure it's very clear what has to be met. But, specifically, setting aside a new process to take a site-specific rezone out of the direct decision-making process of City Council. They're still gonna make the final decision, but staff makes a recommendation to Hearing Examiner. Hearing Examiner's recommendation is the final recommendation from, from staff on the, on the project that would go to, go to council for their final, final decision, which is consistent with many other jurisdictions as well. And then, finally, net billable area. There was some, some confusion around this. The, the definition read net billable acre. Net billable acre was nowhere in the code. We use net billable area, and we have used it consistently over time to establish density or floor area ratio. So, added a few clarifying pieces within that, and updated the code in a few, a few spots.
Okay. So, next steps after today, we'll take findings, and produce a findings conclusions recommendations for Planning Commission to take into consideration on the May 21 regular meeting. And then, we'll have a public hearing with City Council in June, and hopefully, final ordinance potentially in July. All right. Again, tonight, we don't have any action required from Planning Commission. We just want your feedback and guidance. And there are those discussion questions again. Most of them are centered just around if there are any edits to the proposed draft code, as well as those questions specifically for looking at the scale for neighborhood scale commercial, the rideshare parking minimums, if that captures policy intent for the city, as well as if off-street, off-street parking requirements should be removed, or not.
Sarah Gustafson, do you have your mic on?
Sure. Commissioner Gustafson, I agree that we should eliminate all off-street parking requirements. Based on our discussion about incentives, it seems that incentives really have uncertain effect in bringing about the housing. So, I think we should focus on simplifying things, take away the off-street parking requirements. But, at the same time, a City Council's working on, we need the adaptive parking management to make sure that folks don't use whatever existing spaces are there as long-term car storage, and so that people can get to their churches and businesses when they do need to use their cars. Thank you.
And, and real quick, I'll, if I can, expand on the parking management conversation. It, it involves City Managers Office, Finance, Police, Public Works, Community Development. So, it, it's a, it's a bigger project, and it's gonna take a little bit of time to establish what that looks like, parking enforcement, you know, improved signage, education, all those things. But, it's also gonna take some time for development to take place. So, we have, we have a little bit of, of, of time to work through that. But, we are beginning that process within the, within the, the we of the city, the royal we of all of us.
Yeah, absolutely. I know that it's being worked on. I'm more saying that for the, anyone who might be listening. I know our Deputy City Manager, I think this is one of the top priorities for her next year. So, we really appreciate it.
Hey, Commissioner Westerback, I'll comment. I'll be a little more brief than last time. But, let me see. So, first of all, I, I'm perfectly happy with the, the neighborhood retail quote, code that's starting with the Commerce recommendations. I feel like we have to start somewhere. They're really good. I like the compromise you guys made on the 1800 to 25, with keeping the 30, 30% in mind. I couldn't help but thinking, looking at that chart of, you know, the average lot sizes, and how, how big the retail could be. Most people are not gonna make a space, you know, bigger than their house, right? So, it seems very generous. And all the, all the, the Commerce stuff was really thoughtful. I've never reading through it all. So, no complaints there at all. It's great. We have to start somewhere. Like, we'll, we'll tweak it later, right? See if anyone puts in a grocery first, right, or a coffee shop. The, oh, rideshare, yeah. Great idea. I was thinking, so I live downtown, and I see Ubers and Amazon, and there's a ton of delivery that happens. You know, we're, we're more like a city now. We are a city, obviously, but we're more like an urban place now. The thing I see that's missing with most new projects is loading zones. And I haven't looked those up in our code. But, I, rideshare made me think of loading zone more than like a rideshare car. I think the rideshare car is a great idea. And if there's a spot for a parking spot, it should almost be the only one besides an accessible, van-accessible space. But, so, great, great idea that we have to include one for every 20. That's great. But, I would love to see us be looking at, you know, where do the Ubers go? The DoorDash, Amazon trucks, you know, they're, they're, they're parking in front of driveways all the time, and blocking people in the middle of the street and everything. So, I think if, for example, you have to do a, a parallel spot, and build it as part of your franchise improvements, we should be looking at, like, one of those should be the, the yellow 30-minute load, unload, whatever. Also, tons of people move in and out of these buildings. I wa, I can see three from my office and my home. Really, I can see more than that, but three that I can see all the time. There's moving vans every other day. And they don't have any place to park and move in and out, like the, we weren't, we didn't make them put loading zones in some, from some of those buildings. Shag made their own. They striped it out. I don't know if they had to get city permission for that or what. And it's used a lot. It's great. I direct trucks down there, like, oh, you don't have to park in the middle of the street. Go down here, they've got a zone for you to move in and out. Because there's someone moving in and out there almost every day. So, anyway, I'm just thinking about, as we, as we densify and do all these things we're planning to do, that's what, that's what, instead of rideshare, that's what made me think of, just having places for people to park temporarily for five minutes, because there's a lot of, like, two, five, 10-minute stops. And they just have no place to go. So, they park in front of my driveway. It's awesome. Not, right? And I love the insert of the bike requirements, because as big as I am on no parking, which I'll get to next, I, I do wanna see people, right, their e-bikes and stuff like that. And I know in the buildings I'm designing now, if they have less or no parking, we're making sure they have a bike room. I think Seattle actually has requirements like Bellingham, right? You guys must have looked into that. So, love that. And I'm thinking about, like, a lot of my friends, like Sarah here, are riding e-bikes, and you're not gonna go up the stairs with them. So, we have to put them on the ground floor, or have ramps, or whatever, to, to get them in the space. And the requirement's really thoughtful, having the zoned, you know, the five-foot-wide aisle to pull the bike out into, and different kinds of storage and stuff. So, it's really thoughtful. So, I love seeing that in there. Thank you. And then, finally, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay with Commissioner Gustafson's recommendations, and I think ours all along, and very much council's. They've been, council's been really adamant that we just eliminate the parking requirements entirely. HB 5184 is really good. But, I also think of staff, like, you guys have to administer that. That's gonna be kind of wonky. Let's just get rid of it. Developers, once again, they're generally gonna be thoughtful about what they need. And we've all been through this argument before, but let's just eliminate it. And I know the mayor and the council have been, many have been very vocal about, let's just streamline and get rid of it. I know you already started to adapt the code to, to say that as well. So, let's just line it out and get rid of it, simplify the whole thing, and move ahead. That's... Yeah, that's most of it. I couldn't help but bring up, that's what I printed tonight, the ideal, and you guys, planners, probably know all about this, the idea of pretextual planning. So, that, like, I wrote my, my version, or my, my definition is an onerous requirement that can be waived as a bargaining chip. And, you know, inclusionary zoning is the same idea. But, we leave it in there, because it prevents good stuff, but we can use it to get something we want from a developer by waiving it. We know we're gonna probably waive it anyway, but we wanna get that thing. And so, it's throughout our code, and I'd like to see less and less of whatever time. But, to me, leaving parking requirements in and saying, we'll be happy to waive them, but you, you have to go up a story, you have to do this or that, whatever. I think we should just say, we really want the good thing, period, and just make it, as a matter of course, in the code, easy to do the good thing. The more housing, the tree, the whatever. And just, I think we start to get into problems when we're doing negotiations and back and forth. And the author of this article made the point that, once again, like I mentioned a little while ago, it tends to be the more experienced, deeper-pocketed developers that benefit from those programs. Small developers just won't engage on that. They just kinda give up. So, anyway, no parking. It's my opinion. Thank you. And they won't build it, but we shouldn't require it.
Commissioner Lever here. So, to answer the question on the parking, I support the no parking with the caveat, again, really thinking of the, where we are, and the fact that we, we are a suburb. And I keep on thinking of the needs of a white color versus a blue color worker. And it is, I mean, if you have the flexibility to get to your office when you need to get to your office, and/or work from home when you need to get from home, or work from home, that is a very different story as when, when you don't really have a parking spot. And then, if you start actually getting busier, like the cities that I lived before, it, it becomes actually a, a real challenge for low-income residents to really penetrate these type of neighborhoods. So, I definitely understand what we're building for, and I really like the idea that, I wanna think that all of us are thinking regionally and making our communities more walkable. Unfortunately, it's probably not gonna happen in my lifetime, but I do wanna go on the record to know that I know these type of changes, unfortunately, in a country that was developed for cars disproportionately impacts blue-collar workers. And even though we, according to the data that I saw, may not be our demographic, again, when I think about really making it a city that is welcome for all, I'm just sometimes afraid that we think of just one audience, and then we forget about those marginalized communities. In terms of the neighborhood-scale commercial, absolutely, that's a yes. And I don't have any other comments on the other ones. I like support what you're proposing. And it's more so, again, like, thinking of the future, and then how demographics are changing. And I'm just really wanna make sure that we're thinking of those who don't really have the flexibility that we have of just waiting for the bus or the train that's not here yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Robson here. I would like to echo what Commissioner Lever said about just having a few reservations about removing the off-street parking minimums entirely. I do think that it is going to disproportionately affect marginalized populations, particularly the chronically ill, who may not be able to afford a place that has parking spaces. And so, it makes me just a little bit nervous, mostly because I don't know, and none of us really know. However, the one thing I'm fairly certain of is if we don't get the parking management under control first, we're gonna see outrageous backlash from our residents at not being able to find a parking space. And I, I understand that the new development with no parking will become very closely. I don't think that will matter. I think that residents will be very unhappy to learn that this has happened with no parking management. I don't know what that means in the long term, for whether or not we should do this, but it does, those two factors really do concern me. For people like the chronically ill, for seniors who can drive but can't bike or walk, but still need affordable housing, what I'm afraid is affordable housing will come, become a place with no parking. And, and as none of us do, we don't know. And I just wanted to raise those issues.
Just a quick comment. In some places where they've done this, it's been pretty slow in that a lot of developers will still do the parking, because they know to make their project viable, this can be a slow shift over. Often, what it does, it just opens up the difficult lots that are hard to develop, because the entire ground plan has taken up a parking, and you still can't make the project, put enough units on it to make it work. So, I think we're gonna see a ton of projects, majority of projects, developers aren't gonna change. It's gonna be a very slow shift. But, to just put that option on the table, that you don't have to do it, a lot are gonna do it anyway. We're, we're seeing in many, many places, like, in Seattle, they've had no parking required in dense areas for years. And so, they won't do it, like, on Capitol Hill or downtown. But, in, in the outer areas, they've got lesser requirements there, but they're still opting to put in a lot of parking, because they just have the choice. So, they're thinking about what's, what's marketable. So, I don't think we're gonna see, see change, just like with middle housing. I don't, you know, they did that report for us a couple years ago, and they said, at best, 5% to 9%, or something like that, in the next 20 years would kind of flip over, because it wasn't physically or financially viable. Developers are gonna be kind of aversion to that with parking. So, I just wanna keep that in mind, that we're just trying to put options on the table, and, and remove roadblocks for some, some, some projects that wouldn't work without removing it. And people will have to self-select. We've got, you know, decades and decades of housing stock with a fair amount of parking. So, I think people will still be able to find affordable, or, you know, not capital-y affordable, but, you know, market, market rate, at least, with parking. So, I don't wanna go on and on, but I just, I've thought about this a lot. And, and, and when I read about it, that it's, it's very nuanced, what, what results afterwards. Parking management, very much needed for that.
Sarah Gustafson here. I've mentioned this before, but it dovetails with what our other commissioners have mentioned about parking spaces for blue-collar workers. I believe the city hopefully is working with the police, and the church, and the libraries to understand if people are living in their vehicles, and how it would impact them. how it would impact them.
And Sarah, oh, sorry, I'll be brief. And I imagine we'd have some sort of a a pass system developed, kind of like we do. Don't we have about that by the college right now?
I'm not sure, but I can we can definitely pass along the the concerns to the group that's going to be working on parking management.
Like you said, it's a multi-headed Hydra, but I imagine the the passes like because a lot of neighborhoods in cities, Seattle's had this for years, other cities will you know, they'll have the parking passes. If you live in the in the neighborhood, you can go to you go get it and it's usually very inexpensive or even free. And then you're allowed to park overnight, but the person who's coming in maybe can't.
Okay, thank you. This is great. We'll be back on this in two weeks.
Thank you for your presentation today. Okay, if that concludes the presentation, we can, I think we've covered all of our study sessions for today. We're coming away very educated. Thank you. The next section of our meeting today is reports from members. Any reports?
Yes, Sarah Gustafson here on the subject of news articles. I wanted to state that recently I've joined the Board of Directors of The Urbanist, which is a nonprofit organization that covers city planning in this region. And I'd like to address any conflict of interest concerns. I am volunteering to help this organization with nonprofit management. There seems to be no actual or perceived conflict with local law. With that said, of course, I will continue to absorb points of view that may oppose The Urbanist in my responsibility as a planning commissioner. If any questions, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other reports?
Yeah, just a quick note about something coming up. I want to make sure I got the date right here. Was it May? Oh, my gosh, I'm unprepared. Oh, here it is. May fourteenth, there's a webinar from North Urban Human Services Association, NUSA. And I also, I think it's North Urban Human Services Association. They're going to have a webinar talk with Greg Colburn, who wrote the book Homelessness is a Housing Problem, which I haven't read, but I know it's excellent. Everybody's told me how great it is. It came out a couple of years ago and he's a great speaker, very engaged. He was he he just spoke it with the NUSA dinner lunch or whatever recently. Supposed to be a very good presentation and and great information. So it is open to everyone. You can sign up for it. I'm sorry, I don't have the the link, but if you went to the N U H, N U H S A, NUSA website, you could probably sign up. It's eleven. I think it's eleven A M. On May fourteenth. Anyway, it might might be of interest. You could watch on your lunch hour or something like that. I think anybody can sign up and watch it. Might be good for people like us. Thanks. Oh, and there's, I'm going to be part of a group hosting a live watching of it at the Bothell United Methodist Church up the hill and a bunch of other people. And I think there I think there's one going in Kenmore and some other cities are are holding these sort of like in-person watch parties and they're going to have discussions afterwards. So those are going on too.
Maybe the Bothell Urban mailing list folks might want to hear about it.
Actually, Bothell Urban is hosting it. So we we did send it up.
Okay. I'll have to look in my email to make sure I didn't miss it.
Well, I hope we did. Let me put it that way.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving along, reports from staff.
Just two two things. So we'll be back on the twenty-first for our next regular meeting. We'll follow up with the findings, conclusions and recommendations on the Phase Two project. As well, Public Works will be here to discuss transportation impact fees and an update that they're working on to shift over to a multimodal approach. So they'll go through all of all of that explanation. Should be a good conversation. And then this Saturday, there is a workshop as part of the Climate Action Plan outreach work here at City Hall discussing transportation. We'll have folks from, I believe, from Sound Transit and one other agency as well as Public Works to discuss, you know, ways to to work to improve commutes, learn about ways to have an effective commute and commute differently. So hope to see some folks here that are out there listening. And that's it. It's Saturday at eleven, eleven and one. And there is there is food and childcare, which we have learned from our past events, making sure.
That's the the two-line opening day two for Redmond, the light rail. So you can do lots of things that day, maybe.
Okay. If that concludes the reports from staff and there is no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Lever, motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Westerback, second the motion to adjourn.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Oh, gavel. Our next meeting will be, it's not April second. Let's see here. The first, the twenty-first, April, May twenty-first. Thank you.